Yes, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thanks to gentlemen, and by all the councillors, will you please stand?
Impossible.
Stick in the rip line.
And welcome our mayor, councillor Lorton, our deputy mayor, councillor Charlie Smith, and our chief officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden. Thank you everybody. Now, power on councillor Reverend Jan Jan Case to say a fair start this evening's meeting, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and evening everyone.
Evening.
Let's pray. May your God, we gather here again as your public servants, seeking your guidance and direction. We give you thanks for the rich heritage, creativity and love expressed in our local community. We pray that you will be in the centre of our meeting tonight. Grant us in integrity, wisdom and strength to all our leaders, councillors and all those who are taking the public office. So that they may know how to manage conflicts with fans, how to wisely allocate resources for the common good, and how to find solutions to overcome challenges. So may you provide with your mighty and merciful hand and meet all our needs. Lord of justice and love, we pray that your justice will prevail over discrimination. Love prevail patriety. When we see the cross displayed everywhere, may we be reminded of the Christian values that this country is built upon? And the sacrificial love demonstrated by Jesus Christ, who died on the cross to bring healing, forgiveness, peace and hope for all people. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. He's missing. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of Biddles Town Council, Tuesday, September the ninth, twenty twenty five. This meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddles Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community in local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Biddles Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording in public meetings policy if you need more information. So I now declare this meeting open. And we address the agenda. And the first item, number thirty one, is being postponed to.
Just slightly, if that's okay with members, she's on her way to us from from her place of work. So as soon as she gets here, if you're happy with that, we'll slot her in just to where to pass over some charitable donations.
Thank you. So now we turn to our police officers for this evening. PCSO Scott Parry, who is with us to give a report and receive comments. Thank you, Scott.
Well.
And colleague, sorry.
Georgina Cantrell.
Colleague Georgina Cantrell. Welcome both.
Any questions first of all?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for attending. It's always very good to see you. Uh, I am sure you're aware of the incidents which were happening on Monday morning around about three o'clock, four a.m. with a group of four, uh, what looked like youths, completely dressed up, covered, buds, masks on, and looks like they're carrying some equipment in their hands. Uh, they've been trying doors, turning around Aiden Park. I don't want to raise any undue concerns, but it's not the first time it's happened over the course of the last few weeks or so. And as far as I'm concerned, any odd youths walking around at that time in the morning with that type of clothing on, with whatever equipment they've got in the pockets, are certainly going going equipped with only one thing on the mind. And it doesn't go, it didn't go into a party or anything like that. Uh, I'm just wondering what now this instance is happening, now that it's uh, happened more than once. And there's been, you know, a response from the police, but obviously I don't, unless you've got an update, uh, which I'd like to hear. But really, I'd like to see uh, random patrols during the course of those hours on these back streets, because the same's happening in lots of town, just actually stopping. And look at these people. I'm loathe to say the term stop and search because, you know, police have got the open house and sense to judge them on who they come across and whatever, but certainly having a presence and doing a few stops and things would be most, most appreciated. Had an update would be fabulous. Thank you.
In relation to that, we've got allocated, we've allocated an offset in regards to that incident and other instances which have happened. Investigations are ongoing. Patrol strategy has been put in place throughout the evening and the hours of the morning. Smartlets have been sent out to local residents offering advice around home safety and reducing the likelihood of new victims. So we are, we are working on it and it is ongoing.
Right, very much.
Motorbikes, have you got an update, please?
So in regards to, we have been having a bit of a nightmare with my. Uh, so there's a bike post operation, um, has commenced for the next few weeks, including days of action and road policing units have been allocated. Uh, further days of action, including fixed wing, the aircraft support and operating bike capability across the whole of the country. So been allocated. So we are, again, action is being taken.
Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, an incident that happened not last Thursday, but Thursday before, uh, really worrying, where a group of youths were targeting the Indian, sorry, the Chinese takeaways. I think it's Thursday, wasn't it? Monday, okay. A week, a week on Monday. You are, I understand if you can't give too much information out, but a couple of things I'd like to know. We were made, we did make inquiries about whether the CCTV, the Staffordshire Moore and CCTV had picked anything up. And I haven't heard anything back yet from that. I didn't know our officers were checking it. So I went to the surgery following day on the Tuesday, wasn't it? Yeah, that was a fact. Anyway, never mind. Um, and I did, and I did go to the library when you had the surgery, either on the, on the Tuesday or the Friday, whichever one it, whichever one it was. And they said they were going to check up on that. And secondly, should a crime like that be classed as a hate crime? Because it's certainly targeted at an ethnic minority. And if it is targeted as a, as a, as a, as a race crime, a hate crime, does that then put it up the pecking order to get something done about it? And has anybody been apprehended on, on that particular one?
So, so from talking to officers, I don't believe it was a targeted attack. I don't believe it was racial. I believe it was, I believe it was random. Uh, and I believe it was a group of youths. Again, I'm not sure if they're identified, but I can, can find out. But I don't, I don't believe it was racial. I believe it was, I'm going to put it wrong place, wrong time. Do you understand what I mean? I'll, I'll try and find out.
I, I was in, in the pub when one of your officers came into the pub because it was the publican that raised the alarm. And he said it was targeted at, at those takeaway. So that's why, that's all I'm going, that's what I'm going on. That officer said it was targeted.
Okay, I'll find out more information about that and get back to you.
No, uh, CCTV?
I'm not one hundred percent sure of the job other than speaking to an officer, so I don't know CCTV or if anyone's been.
Have we checked for our, our CCTV? We've got CCTV at the town hall, um.
I think they have checked CCTV, it's just that they've not been identified. And that particular group or similar group have been going around. And they were going around the scout huts, not just the takeaways. They've been going all around Biddle. So when they say it's targeted, it's not typically targeted them because they've gone other places as well. And the football club, um, this particular group is just causing issues everywhere.
So we know it's, we know that it's this group that's done the vandalism at the football club.
We don't know the definite because it's still under investigation. And a lot of the times they're covering themselves up, so we have to be adamant it's them before we can take action on them. And this particular group that we know that's doing similar, um, we are, there is action being taken.
It's just that I honestly think it's only a couple of steps between what's happening now and somebody getting seriously hurt.
Yeah.
Uh, but like I say, with all the patrols, we are dealing with specific individuals that are targeting different areas. It's just, we have to, because they're doing so many, we have to accumulate them to do it as one, to take them to court. So.
The difficulty is identifying them when, when the faces are covered up as well.
I understand the difficulties. It's frustrating. Okay, thank you.
It's very frustrating for us as well.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, please.
Okay, um, so just some feedback on the, on the police surgeries. I mean, yourself, you did one, uh, the other day, didn't you, at the library? Was it yourself?
I think it was Liam.
Liam.
I don't want to say.
Is it possible that sort of one in four of these surgeries could be outside of working hours or on a weekend? And we've asked that previously, um, but there's been several people on, on social media commenting that they would like to attend, but it's, it's the outside of working hours. We're just wondering if it's possible, like, it's like if there was one in four or something outside, it's to allow everyone to be able to access.
About six p.m.
Weekends, I mean, I do weekends anyway, but certainly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try and get some on the weekends as well because I might be bound to pressure.
Thank you.
Councillor Gav.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to go on record, I'd just thank you for your attendance at Biddlesmore at the public meeting, where we had well over fifty people in attendance there. Also, I'd like to thank you for taking action based upon the responses from the residents of Biddlesmore during the speed camera. And I'm pleased to see that the, had been a resolution to the cloned vehicle that was highlighted. So just to go on the record, thank you for your work on that, given your colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and may I just say, the last couple of weeks, there's been instances, I live on Aiden Park and I hear this. It isn't incident with Don Aiden Park. I guess it's in Hyde Street or on St. Bruce's Car Park or somewhere within distant deer shot. Vehicles racing at eleven thirty at night. They don't seem to start until eleven o'clock on occasion. But if you're aware of that.
No, I can have a point of information on that. So I believe this Conventon Road Mall Cop, I hear them from the side window, side window of my house.
And the strategy.
Yeah.
Managing with that.
I know it's something the community team at Staffordshire Moorelands are involved with, and also the community team at Cheshire Eastern are involved. So hopefully something will happen, but yeah, it's, it's quite dreadful to be honest, if I can hear from where I am.
Yes.
We have seized a vehicle up there already. So, you know, we are, it, it is in place most evenings and weekends.
Who are written this?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else, please? No, in which case.
I'm going to leave to box my cards. Uh, what we've done is, um, I've developed a profile and it is for all the councillors across five boroughs. If you will take part, any issues within your board, please email me and that'll come directly. If I can't do anything about it, I will, I'll have the source of it. Actually, if it's, if it's obviously a job that I'm going one on one, still waiting to be done, I don't know. Or any other issues, please feel free to email me.
Lastly, councillor Salt wish to speak.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come back, Mr Mayor. Just, um, there are some businesses that have been quite vocal about police officers not dropping into the businesses to check how things are going. There's one particular business that's an estate agent that I think would really value a visit from a police officer. And I won't say their name because we're being filmed, um, but if you want to contact me after, I think that, yeah, I'll email you. And I think that person might really value a conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And both officers, thank you very much for attending this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now receive any apologies for absence?
Uh, yes, councillors Ward, Jones and Hall.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. Firstly, we declare any disclosable pecuniary interests and dispensations. Councillor Salt.
And both lots of expenses. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Um, it's fair to say, having a look down the expenses, I'd rather think there's several members who are receiving some payment in this, in this period, who are down for expenses. So if someone should find that they are involved and wish to make a declaration as proceedings continue, please, please do so. Councillor Reddick, please.
Yes, Mr Mayor, my travel expenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Secondly, declaration. Does anyone wish to declare any other disclosable interest? No. Thank you very much for that. Now we move to minutes. Firstly, the minutes of the town council on the eighth of July. These are in the packs. And I will go through them, reading out the paragraph numbers. Um, present or present and in attendance. Public participation, paragraph sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, A, B, nineteen, A, B, C, D and E. Paragraph twenty, paragraph twenty one, A and B, C, paragraph twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty. Do you mention the confidential items? And confidential items, paragraph twenty three. Councillor Salt, please.
It's just a numbering issue. We go from thirty to twenty three. Yeah, we deferred twenty three.
Oh.
That's all right.
Well, you're a good kid.
Which you gave me twice.
I noticed it. I thought they were separately numbered. And would it, anyone like to propose that, that we accept those minutes? Councillor Yates, please. Secondly, councillor Garvey, those in favour of acceptance? Carried, thank you. Initial. Next we move to, um. Yes, I'm, we see the minutes of recreation, I think.
Yes, I'd like to move the minutes of the recreation amenities committee.
Yes, there. Waiting, everyone. Minutes of the recreation and amenities committee now, held Tuesday the eighth of July. Supper out, love.
Yes, it says that I was in attendance, she wasn't.
Then that.
And then that.
Yes, my apologies as well, sir.
Other, we'll go through then. We've mentioned attendance. Um, apologies, that's got, um, paragraph fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. And confidential items, paragraph twenty seven, twenty eight and twenty nine. Any, any points to be made?
Second of.
They've made, proposing.
Councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart's proposing, councillor Park's seconding. Will we accept those minutes, please? Yes, thank you. Carried. I think it'll be next, isn't it?
Yes, please.
We now turn to the minutes of the planning committee. Tuesday, the fifteenth of July.
New points, please.
Thank you, councillor Garvey. Um, those present and in attendance, apologies. Paragraph twenty, declarations of interest for twenty one, minutes twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Thank you. Are there any points, anyone wish to speak? No, thank you. Seconded by councillor Epton. So may we vote on that one, please? Those in favour of those minutes? Accepted. Thank you. We now have the minutes of the town and community committee. Councillor Garvey.
Please.
Moving in.
Of the meeting.
Oh, of the absent care.
You're moving at these minutes. Thank you. These are the minutes of the town and community committee, held on the fifteenth of July, twenty twenty five. Members present, attendants, apologies, declarations of interest, and the minutes. And then paragraphs twelve, thirteen, fourteen, then ten and eleven and twelve thirteen. So any points to be made, please?
I think we might just have a little look at the numbering.
Yeah.
Find a proper version.
Yes, thank you. Uh, councillor Garvey's moving. Wood second, please. Councillor Salt will second. May we vote? Do you wish to accept these minutes? Accepted.
Councillor Salt can't second.
She's not setting.
Oh.
That was her, her spot.
Sorry, catching me up.
Absolutely.
Councillor Yates in lieu as second. We need to revote. All in favour? Thank you, Seaman. So next is the mayor's communications, isn't it? Mayor's communications now. Biddles Town Mayor's Report, as at the ninth of September. At the time of my previous mayor's report, the Biddle Festival was just beginning. The following few weeks promised to be a very busy time. So it turned out to be. But counting festively, festival events is not an exact science. For various reasons, a few events don't get included in the festival brochure or fall just outside the festival period itself. That said, I managed to attend fifteen or so different festival events, together with another four repeat visits. There was also a handful of other civic duties in the town and one at Stone. The festival events included a number of musical performances, a theatrical event and an art and photography exhibition. The tenth anniversary of the zone was celebrated and there was a fun day at the family hub. Together, these latter two events involved older children and the little ones too. A summer concert was also held at the Roche School with music performed by the pupils. The more senior members of our town keenly supported the U three A's showcase event in the town hall. And our Italian visitors from Fuscignano in an appearance at one of the Cafe on the Steps occasions in the town halls too. Some of the churches which joined in running the cafe also had events and special services of their own. I attended several of these. These were just a selection of the many events which the festival, uh, revealed, in which the festival revealed just what a rich range of activities takes place in our town. In many instances, they are the result of efforts by volunteers who so generously give their time to make these things happen. I wish there was time to have mentioned them all and to have joined in their events too. This brings us to the month of August, which being the main holiday period, saw far fewer events. But they were nonetheless still memorable ones. Firstly, there was on Saint Lawrence's Day itself, a joint service at Saint Lawrence in Biddles to mark the coming together earlier this year of this church and its namesake in Rushton Spencer to form a joint benefice. A few days later, there was Fiji Day, when wreaths were laid both at the town cenotaph and at Saint Lawrence's. A service in the church then followed and the occasion was completed by a fish and chip lunch for all which were served in the schoolroom. The month, the month third mayoral engagement was to visit Springbank Nursing Home at Mill Hayes, when it held its impact showcase event. What started out as a, can you pop in to see us during the day request, turned into a stay of over seven hours. Voluntarily, I must add, when I was driven home, well fed and watered after. Well fed and watered after what was a most enjoyable time. I have already attended two civic functions in Leake in the present month. And there is a number of other events, both in the town and further afield, to attend in the near future. More about these next time. My voyage of adventure continues. Any questions? Thank you. Now, standing agenda items. And I'm looking to our Chief Officer, Sarah, here. Firstly, the matter where we receive an update on the management of the town council assets.
I haven't got a great deal to report on this one because we have a separate agenda item which is the town hall frontage. Just interesting, I think, to note that we've hosted a wallaby at the visitor centre this summer and that's been really well received. And we've been absolutely delighted to be involved in that partnership with outside, so we hope to do more things like that. Got any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. It's a thing with it. Little while ago, I was over at Leake, but one of the Leake councillors, I won't mention the name, had been looking for these wallabies. Said, I've never been to Biddlestone Grange Gardens before the visitor centre. What a fantastic place it is. So it has brought people, as I know, to the Biddleford and seen things they've never seen before, so it's working, thank you very much for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Wisdom strategy.
Thank you. Next, to receive an update on health and safety activities, including risk management.
Thank you, yes, we were joined in the town hall by. Our health and safety advisor over the summer, who completed a health and safety inspection of both the town hall and the visitor centre. There are no issues to raise with you there, as always, there are kind of small actions to. To pick up on, but no significant risks identified. Very positive experience.
Any, any points, please? Thirdly, to receive an update on Biddle Works Together project.
Thank you, I think probably Council Jackson might want to say something on this as well, but we, after a kind of summer break for the members where a lot of the volunteers. Take some time away from their volunteering activities. We've had our first Biddle Works Together meeting. And we've talked about kind of updates. Who is involved over the coming few months? And we've started the ball rolling by asking people to think about what the timetable for their activities looks like over these coming winter months. So, we've given a loose-ish deadline of the start of October for people to come up with. The information that they want to include within that. Previously, we've had a sort of A3 timetable of activities that are on each day. And they're all keen about doing things like that and some new ideas as well, so it's all looking very positive and the next meeting is, as I say, at the start of October.
Council Jack.
Chair, I opened the meeting foolishly saying that these people have had a quiet summer. Far from it, they've been busy all the way through the summer, all of the groups have been doing something. All through the summer, which again, it never ceases to amaze me how dedicated these volunteers really are. And it's really a pleasure to share that group, it really is. And I shall miss it when I pass it on to the next one. It really is a pleasure to be part of that group. Incredible people. I did make a suggestion, Chair, but we had a chance to reach out yet, whether we have a word with the University of the Third Age. To see if they might be interested in getting involved with some of the stuff, because they do a lot of the stuff anyway. And I thought, I just thought that they might be an organisation that might want to get on board. And spread their wings and make contacts with the other groups that we've already got. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And may I add that I have been going to these meetings in recent times and enjoy and find them very instructive. Unfortunately, I had a clash though, this week. My apologies. Thank you. Now. Item 38. To receive an update on outside body meetings attended since our last council meeting. And it could be that there's nothing to say for some of these. Biddleton Bloom? Don't think, no, no, thank you. The Morlands Assembly.
It's next weekend.
Yes.
That's a sense. That's right, sorry.
Right, so there's nothing to say there. Staffordshire Parish Council's Association, Council Epton.
Mr Mayor, yes, I went over to Stafford last week. And quite a big agenda, quite a big agenda, if I look out of the way. What's a lot of it was updating policies. Similar to what we do over here. But one, one little one or quite a big one in many ways, and about this devolution of councillors. And they're saying that SPCA looks like they will have a lot more powers than they've ever done in the past. So we will be working even close with the SPCA in the future. Or it's looking that way at this moment in time. But say, if anybody wants to have all the policies, they've brought them with me. Any way to read, obviously I'm not going to stand there and read them all through for you. But thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any points on that? Thank you. Then we've got the Morlands Partnership Board. No one, no one.
No.
No, nothing to say there. The Twinning Association, I think I'm reminded that I'm supposed to speak on that, well, I certainly haven't been aware of anything.
Courtman always says that one, yeah.
Yes. I think since the last meeting.
Nothing since the last meeting.
No, thank you. And finally, Fair Trade. It's Council's.
And just to note that the Fair Trade Group have got fair trade cake competition as part of the homemade and homegrown event that's at Biddlestown Hall on the 27th of September. I believe it's free to enter if anyone wants to bake the cake and enter that competition. And obviously, if you can try and attend, it'd be really nice to make that really well attended, thank you.
That completes item 38. Item 39 is an item requested by Council Proudlove. So, Council Proudlove, would you like to present it, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As everybody in the room knows. Local government reorganisation is progressing quickly now. We're just, just under three months away from submissions to government. And the district council, you know, have committed to going down a particular route. So, option D described. Which would see the creation of a unitary authority for North Staffordshire, which would include the current local authority areas of Newcastle, Stoke and the Morlands. And little bits of Stafford Borough and East Staffordshire. One of the things that the district council is working hard towards is to embed within the proposal that goes to government. Firm locality working arrangements. And that is basically to help secure a legacy. From the district council for the residents' businesses of the Morlands. And workers are already progressing over in general towards that end. And we would like to be looking at what we can do here in Biddles. Because what we want is the Biddlestown Town Council to have us, continue to have a strong role. And to continue to have that close local relationship that we have now. And we'll have a different relationship looking upwards, moving forward. We'll be dealing with one authority rather than two. But what's important for us here is what we can, what we can do in the town. So, there are three aspects to motion. First two of which, I think, in my opinion ought to be addressed through the Town and Community Committee. And the third, which obviously would need to be picked up through the devolution and local government reorganisation working group. So, on that, Mr Mayor, I'll leave it open and. See what members have to say.
May I, may I start off the response first, Paul, please? Would I be right to say that the objective here is working with the present district council? To get things done for Biddles in the time that remains in their existence in the first place? Because after reorganisation. There won't be a district council to liaise with in any way, will there?
No, as I say, Mr Mayor, what we, what we're looking to achieve is, yeah. There's a legacy aspect of what we can do between now and the 31st of March 2028. Part of that is establishing locality working arrangements which will go in the proposal to government. So what, what, what the district council will put to government is a proposal for local governments above us. For North Staffordshire, or we've also got to articulate what it'll be like in South Staffordshire as well. But just for us. We, we're intending to embed working, you know, working relationship, a locality working arrangement within that proposal goes to government. So yes, our relationship obviously won't be with the district council post 31st of March 2028. It will be a different authority, but we're intending to articulate what that working relationship will look like in the proposal to government.
Yes, and if I can just pick up on a bit of that. We are, we are proposing how we should work with what we foresee to be the future. Yet we don't know what the future is, because we don't know which of the proposals will be adopted for us, will we?
No, obviously government made that decision. But all, all we can do is put our, you know, foot forward now in terms of doing the very best that we can. You know, towards when we go into this, this new world, because it is going to happen. The likelihood is that there are going to probably be two proposals considered by government. That's my opinion. And the district council proposal will likely be one.
Thank you for that, thank you. Do you have anyone else to turn now? Please, Caster.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second this, this proposal put forward by Council Proudlove. Because I think it's incumbent on us as the town council to engage in the process to ensure that we can get the, the best outcomes for the people of this town. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Council.
Chair, I think. If you're planting potatoes, you do a lot of work, spade work before you put the potatoes in, don't you? And I think this is what this is. I think he's doing some of the spade work beforehand. Wayne's already said, the Parish Council Association are also looking to the future. We're unclear exactly where the boundaries are going to be formed, but we know that new boundaries will be born. That's, that's, that's the position we're in at the moment. And we do know that we've got to be talking to the district council that's going to be disappearing. And also the county council that's going to be disappearing, because the services that they provide. Perhaps might fit nicely with, with what we, we want to provide as a council as well. And I will say this, I think when you look at some of the town councils across the whole of Staffordshire. Should say, we are at the forefront with, with our incredible staff. I have to say that because they hit me funny. But we have got foundations already here. We're on the launchpad already and we are way ahead of the Parish Council Association in respect. And also the vast majority of the, you know, the comparable size town and district, town councils and parish councils that are in Staffordshire. So whichever way the dice falls, we know we're going to be dealing with something. So I think it's really important to see what's out there, what's on offer, what the county are looking to get in bed of, or what, you know, what we want to pick up and where the money comes from. So there's a lot of work to be done, but I do think we're in a really good position to actually grab, grab this devolution by the horns. And make this town council even more responsive to the town, to the people that are out there. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Just hope, please.
Yeah, I support the motion, but believe that it should all be undertaken by the Devolution Working Group. And I think, I think it would distract from an already busy. Town and Community Committee agenda. And I think it needs to be given its, all three items need to be given their own voice under that umbrella. That's the only point that I'd make. But also for point one, in terms of the local strategic priorities, we've probably already got that on the shelf anyway. I know that we've got a list of priorities that we look at and review every year, so that shouldn't take too much work. But I don't believe that it should form part of the Town and Community Committee. I think it should be given its own voice and its own special committee. I don't think it should be a sideshow of what's an already busy committee.
Thank you. Yes, Council Yates, please.
So, if that's an amendment, I'm quite certain of that amendment, to be honest. I think there's a fair degree of sense to that. And it allows it to be rim-fenced and treated with the gravitas which it deserves. I think I'd just like to reiterate what Council Jackson said. Biddlestown Council, perhaps residents don't, don't know, but you probably presume that every other town council, every other parish council is the same in Staffordshire. Biddlestown Council's a bit of an outlier, it's always, it's, it's never taken no for an answer. It's always found a solution to actually do things for the people of Biddles and it's always, and it's always found a way. So this gives us an opportunity. With the localism part of the strategy that staffs them all that they're doing. So for actually us to say what we want to step up and do, whether we just want to carry on doing what we are and hopefully we aren't to interfere with too much. But it does give you the opportunity of, of picking things which we want to take forward and safeguard. And that is a legacy which started with Biddleford Urban District Council when it was the biggest urban district council in the country. Up until 1974, we managed to survive the local government reorganisation which created the Staffordshire Morlands. And quite a lot of the councils of that time were dry kicking and screaming into that proposal as well. So, so there's, there's a legacy of not wanting change when these reorganisations do. So we really need to take this forward on, on the front foot. And I think this, this motion empowers the local government strategy group and the town council to allow us to do that. To make sure that we, we've, we've very much got a seat at that table and punching above as weight as we always do.
Thank you. So, out of the discussion. Speakers have given. Support for the activities that we should be following. But there is an alternative view as to who should be doing those activities. Which, which group within the council should be doing them? So, would the procedure be, is it open question? Do we do two votes on this, on the, on the activities and then to who? But councillor, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to accept Council Saltwell's amendment if we're going to move forward and vote on that basis.
Do we? Yes.
I'm happy as second of the original proposal to accept that. I think moving into the LGR, Devolution Working Group does make a degree of sense.
You don't defend. Please. Can we accept that?
Yeah. That's a proposal, so please.
So, yes, councillor Proudlove, you're happy to accept that amendment. So, your proposal is. Do we wish to follow those three areas of activity? And for the devolution, local government reorganisation stroke devolution working group to take all three of those on board?
Voted.
Right. There we are, we've got the vote. Thank you. Oh, passed. Thank you. Now we move. And to item number 40. To consider the content of an anonymised letter from a constituent. And a response to consider a response to that letter. Yes. Council Saltwell first, please.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the resident for writing in, first of all. I think there were a lot of legitimate questions in there and some of the content is quite considered. And because this chamber isn't a debating chamber. I would recommend that I ask the Chair of the Local Government Reorganisation Group to work with the Chief Officer. To answer the questions at the end of the letter that we, that we can all see in front of us with the knowledge that we have right now. And understanding that everything is in flux and we do not know and today reform have put their proposals forward. So that's another egg in the basket. But as our understanding, as we can answer those questions today, so. The Chair of the LGR Committee alongside the Chief Officer to compose a letter, circulate to councillors via email. And if we've got any problems with that letter or want to add anything, we can seek amendments as councillors. But let's take the heat out of the debate, it's not a place for debating. Reason questions while worth an answer, we've already got the answer. The, the chair of that committee and the chief officer are more than competent to answer those as we see fit now and we don't really debate. So that would be my proposal, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Salt, councillor Proudler.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I, I was simply going to, um, propose that we move to, to the working group. To, it's, it's.
Good. Councillor Yates.
Yes, so that was a proposal by councillor Salt, I'd second that proposal as, as a sense response, especially in light of the previous agenda item which has discussed our position, our stand, which is obviously very fluid and will be, uh, uh, firmed up as a part of the continuing, uh, deliberations at the, uh, devolution working group. So if that's a proposal, I, I second that.
Thank you for that, councillor Garvey.
Mr Mayor, as chair of the reorganisation, we might be happy to, to, to work with the chief officer on this one as the council, the council's favourite of that, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to anybody else do the job, but I think as a header on this, on this, that letter heading back, there's a lot we don't know yet.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, that's got to be sort of
clear.
These responses are as far as we know at this moment in time. And somebody already said, things can be very fluid and things can be, things can change. So I think that as a header, uh, in the response, so the slate or person doesn't come back leaving, the town council said this. Everything has got to be sort of under caveat that things can change and we don't know all of the answers.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? So, yes, please.
Just a thought, I'm just thinking that way around that might possibly be for the chair and the chief officer to actually put forward their responses, which are then passed to the members of that committee, then give their feedback based on that.
Yeah.
Without amendment to the proposal.
So just about the reason for that being that it may be the people don't quite agree with what's written in that and want to then at least express their point before it goes out.
Without amendment which you're putting forward to proposal.
No, it's, it's a working group, I'm sorry, so there are no members, anyone can like.
Is it working?
I think it's a bit tough.
Everybody.
So. You've got the proposal seconded.
Right, so we're now going to vote that proposal as voiced by councillor Park.
Councillor Salt.
Councillor, voiced by councillor Salt with.
No, councillor Yates. Absolutely.
Right, yes, yes. Councillor Salt, councillor Yates, can we have a vote on it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now then, we come to the money. To approve the local government services pay agreement. And there's a table attached to the, to the pack showing existing and proposed base scales.
That's the fault, councillor Smith.
Councillor Smith, please.
Um, just to declare an interest as someone who is also part of the local government service pay agreement, obviously not for this council, just a, a non-mercy recune interest.
Thank you. Councillor Eppen, please.
I would propose that I have no choice in the matter.
Absolutely. Come on, mate.
I think that.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's, who's?
Councillor Redding, councillor Harper.
So councillor Eppen proposing that we
will send it.
Councillor Harper seconding, seconding it. So may we vote, please, on approving? Oh, so did you want to speak, councillor?
Just briefly, yeah, we're not talking about wages increases as such, we're not bringing up any increments on the scales. Staff staying on the same scale, it's just the annual cost of living increase which we tied to, thank you very much, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Miss councillor Garvey.
Mr Mayor, that's a question on this. Maybe this is going to be effectively impact the, um, budget for costs for the council? So is that factored into the budget that was put forward? Okay, thank you for what you need, no, thank you.
Oh, we, we vote on this now? Yes, that we, we accept this.
It's being proven.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Where's every shekel, answer?
Every biscuit.
Yeah, every biscuit. Now, item forty two, to receive an update on the town hall frontage development. Excuse me, the day's big topic really, in many ways?
In many ways, it also isn't because there isn't anything dramatic to tell you about. On, on Friday, all of the hoarding and all of the harrisoning removed. And then we'll officially open the frontage on Saturday. So, um, that's quite exciting, that's great. Yes, um, I think there's, there's still a lot of bits of detail still to be kind of tidied up a little bit this week. And everybody's brushing madly and there'll be some pansies that'll go in on Friday and, um, kind of tidying up will happen. But essentially, everything is where we, we need it to be. The mining wheel is in position. Um, we'll be working with the electrician to put the lights in the right directions at some point this week when it goes dark. Um, this, um, the, the railings have gone in and are completed this week, having been refurbished. The, the items that have gone back in have been refurbished for really high quality, so should last absolutely forever. Thanks to those who gave their input, um, with my email over the summer about the contents of the kind of mining heritage board. That will be in the notice board by Friday as well. Um, so the, um, deputy lord lieutenant will be here with us on Saturday to two o'clock on Saturday to officially open the town hall frontage. Um, Marg has attempted to contact all of the two hundred and fifty six brick owners to advise them of that. Lots of them gave us email addresses, but quite a lot of the applicants were elderly and didn't have email addresses. So we've been trying to get hold of them, so, uh, but we've got something going in the Chronicle about that. Um, and we've got, um, a mining exhibition, um, talking about the history of mining in Biddles, which will take place in the town hall at the same time with some refreshments for people who were there as well, a real celebration of mining and information about the history there. Um, so probably nothing else to add unless anybody has any specific questions about aspects of the development.
Councillor.
Yes, just.
Yes, Mr Mayor, just want to plug in here that I'm glad it's finished for Saturday.
Yes.
The annual classic car show, uh, and also the unveiling of the wheel at two o'clock. So I'm glad it's finished for that date and we certainly stick to it and they have gone, thank goodness, after all the holdups that they've had. Um, luckily they've had good weather until recently, but that's held one a little bit, but they have got there, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Harper, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I've already had positive comments from members of the public who really think it's a, it's a nice job that we've done. It, it's again, I think it's, it's the collective responsibility of this town council to do the good things this town. Um, if we carry on doing that, we'll be doing our job. Uh, but, uh, those positive comments, uh, that's people who called in to see me. Uh, and, uh, I've, I've said this, so one way we continue to do projects.
Thank you for the input there, councillor, thank you.
Councillor Jackson.
Councillor Jackson, please.
Yeah, can I just plug in for our staff here? The way this process has gone, uh, it has created a lot of work, extra work for, for our staff, so could I, on behalf of all the councillors, if I, maybe so both, thank our staff for the extra effort that, that they've put in. I think how we've actually managed, um, the process with, you know, regulations with the contractors, um, with the architects, and we've been able to iron any issues out. There've been a few, there's been a few, but it's been handled in such a way that the contractors have taken it on board, I think, really, really well. They bent over backwards to make sure we were happy with what was actually happening. Uh, the interaction with the, the architects, keeping the contractors on board with what, doing what they said they should do and they did do. So I think for future, for future projects, I mean, I shall never be involved with one as big as this, hopefully some of you may be. Um, I think it's a, a really good way of actually handling the process. Um, of just having, just talking to each other, um, and it's worked really well. But just again, for the staff, a lot of the staff have done a lot of extra work that they wouldn't have normally have done. Um, Margaret, all the work that she's done with the names on the bricks and Sarah with the, uh, conversations with the contractors and then, and all, and all of the staff and, and even, you know, the people, uh, in, in the reception that have been dealing with working, walking in and shouting, people from asking what's been going on, I think the process has gone on. Um, unfortunately, I, I do occasionally look at social media, uh, and I think, my God, bother. The vast majority of the comments are in the positive and the, the usual sub-subjects, uh, sub-subjects, subjects, uh, that's, um,
Suspects.
You could write, you could write the names down, uh, and say, this is the sort of conversation you're going to get from them. Not knowing exactly how the system works, how the money is collected, which boss it comes out of. Uh, a lot of people are ignorant and it's, it's understandable, local government finance is, 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 is a a black arc in itself, as it were, but I do, I really do think the process has gone on and to just, I haven't sort of looked, I'm waiting till two o'clock to go anywhere near to have a closer look because, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, relatives. And also, when I looked at the list that Margaret sent, uh, it's two hundred and, what was it, two hundred and fifty six? I think I probably knew getting on for two hundred of them. Either through sons or daughters or fathers, uncles and all the rest of it. And it really is, a lot of the mining community really think we have done something special out there. And I think we have as well. So again, thanks to all the staff and the contractors and, and, uh, Chris Taylor Designs for their work as well. Uh, it's worked really, really well and never a cross word between any of us.
Thank you.
If I may just come back on that and thank you, um, for your support, it has been quite an overish process on top of the day job, so it means a lot to have that recognised by you. I think if I may, if I may just say, a, a plug for all of the local contractors who've been involved in this project as well. I've seen the same social media things that you have and there's been cynicism about the amount of money spent and where the money's gone and all the rest of it. And you know, as town councillors, but maybe people outside don't know that the vast majority of our contractors are already the Biddles for Staffordshire Malins based. Um, and that's the case with this project as well, and we've used a lot of Biddles people. So the implication that work is either shoddy or it's going to people outside of the area is really poor. And that reflects really badly on local businesses who have behaved amazingly and been really easy to work with.
I know we've probably before the starting gun's gone off, but I think perhaps it is worth it that members of this town council would take a vote to thanks for our staff for the extra work that they've done. And also if they were paying something to the, all the contractors that were involved, saying that the town council appreciate the work that, that, that they've done and the, and, and, and the professional way in which they've done it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Yates first, please, if you're going to be to say something.
Oh, I'm, I'm very happy to go straight to the vote for thanks.
Councillor Salt, do you wish to say something?
I was just wondering if councillors, and you'll probably do this as part of the press release, so maybe if we can have a coffee because of that stuff on social media, I'd really like to be able to go back sometime with the facts and sometimes to get to the facts, I've got to look through lots of different documents. So could we have a list of the contractors and a li- and an overall cost, if that's all right? Um, just so that we can, if we're asked, go back, go back to the facts. But obviously, I'm sure that'll come out in a press release as well. Um, just to echo my thanks to the team. And also, when you think back probably five years ago, when this started off with a row, actually, um, when, um, the vast majority of the council were in favour of moving the wheel, and I think it was only Hilda and I that said, uh, no. And then, and there was lots of backwards and forwards.
Thousand people out.
About twenty thousand people out. And then there was loads of backwards and forwards and what do we do? And then that has been created from people listening to the outside world, disagreement with inside this chamber and then look, look what's come to fruition. So, um, there's a lot of legacy work there as well. So thanks to councillors past and present, councillors that are no longer with us, to the team, to councillors in the, in the chamber and certainly to the contractors, and thanks very much for everyone that's made it happen so far.
Good, councillor Smith, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Jill said, I think, you know, all the disagreements we had about moving the wheel. I think actually now it looks more striking than it did before and it's in a much more prominent position. And I think it's, um, a real statement to the mining history, but also to, uh, councillor Humphries, who it was dedicated to originally.
I saw that thing about his name, councillor Harper.
Mr Mayor, thank you for letting me come back. That was specifically, uh, a comment that was made by a member of the public to me. Doesn't it look better where it is? It's much more prominent than it was. Uh, so, um, but that member of the public is a reasonable member of the public.
Um. So. So, a, a vote of thanks was proposed, I think, in my opinion, richly deserved. How do we actually carry this out then?
Well, you, you're councillor Jackson.
Second.
Second.
Round of applause.
Yeah, why not?
Well done to all concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We agreed then. Want to? Show.
Well done if you want, goodbye.
Bye, all's well.
Bye, okay, thank you.
Well, it's done, two o'clock Saturday.
Two o'clock Saturday.
Now, accounts and finance.
Just leaving the room, um, because I'm on the agenda, but also to see if our guests have arrived and are lurking downstairs a little. So I also have to, thank you. Having just glanced down, can I please declare an interest as I am?
Yes, it's the end. Thank you. So, interest declared. Um, we're looking now at the accounts expenditure over five hundred pounds. What I've been buying?
No, no, you've got, yeah, just coming up to it.
Right, um.
We've got the question.
And then we have the next section of expenditure less than five hundred pounds. A few credit card entries.
I suppose you're a second.
A minute. Are there any comments, please, councillor?
I'm in, yeah.
Wait. Secondary, secondary councillor. Thank you. So we vote on.
A, are you moving them?
Moving to, to, eh?
Yeah.
So we vote on this, do we?
Please.
Vote on this, please. Eh? Then we turn.
So has everyone got a supplementary?
The extra piece of paper.
Self and councillor Salt abstain.
Yes, oh, councillor Smith and Salt, you say they're abstained. Oh, this is the supplementary items. Um, expenditure over five hundred. And we go round to the reverse side, expenditure less than five hundred. Yes, are there any points first, first, is it a point?
Oh, was it?
Suppose, well.
Seconded, yeah.
Seconded.
Yep.
Thank you. So may we vote on that, please? Accepted, thank you.
All the payments, no?
I think.
That's it.
That's it.
Oh.
Now, close the meeting at seven oh eight, I make it?
Yeah, it's had right, right.
Thank you, thank you all very much, thank you. Yes, do you want to go out there?
We can be in a call pass.